A quorum being present, the special town meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the Mass General laws and the bylaws of Granby? Please rise as Select Board Chairman Mr. Shonacki leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are a non-resident or a non-voter, please sit in the designated areas in the back. If you'd like to comment or discuss any of the motions presented tonight, please raise your hand so that I may acknowledge you. When the mic runner comes to you, please state your name and address, and then go on with your discussion or comment. Please have your comments or discussions to me, and I will direct them to the appropriate person. Do not direct any comments to a particular person at town meeting. The moderator will now recognize Chief Wishart to present the motion under Article 1.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the bylaws of the Town of Granby, Volume 1, by inserting Chapter 17, Section 8, Public Consumption of Marijuana.
Can I have a second? I will now open it up for discussion, although I already know we have an amendment to this motion, which I will have Chief Wishart present right now.
The original article as written, we found there was a couple of errors in it. When I say errors, in the first paragraph under Section A, one of the last lines in that section refers to private property, and this bylaw itself, and almost completely has been approved by the Attorney General's Office already, with the exception of that wording that refers to private residences. And while that wording, when we were looking at it, was not intended to deal with somebody on their own property, it was intended to deal with somebody else on your property that you didn't want there. However, this bylaw has been approved in part without that wording. So that last sentence or so that deals with on the private property of another, we need to amend that out. And then also in Section B, it refers, in the narrative of the Section B, it refers to the wrong section. I believe it says 1B, it should be 8. So those two minor edits are the reason for the amendment.
Do you have a... No, I don't... This is it?
Nope.
Do I have a second for the amendment? Can I have a motion to stop debate on the main article and to discuss the amendment? With a second? Is that a second? I need a second first before we discuss anything. Thank you. So now, we will open the floor to discuss the amendment, which is the deletion of the last sentence. Did you have a question or a comment? Wait for the mic.
Seamus Connolly, 21 Ferry Hill Road, Granby, Massachusetts. I would, you know, I am in support of the, you know, of, I think there should be an amendment. My, I think there should be an amendment, it should be kept 500 feet away from a school. Should be kept, if somebody were to have a business, they should be monitored by CT cameras, and should be, and should, and should, and whoever goes on their store's property, if the building commission were to get a license, I say we would have an amendment that they have to, that they have to go to daily updates with the Granby Police Department and building commissions.
So Seamus, I think you're going outside the scope of the amendment at this point, which is simply deleting the last sentence in Section A?
Which Section A was what? I'm sorry, like, I've like...
Hold on.
Jesus, I'm sorry, I wasted your time.
Thank you. So originally, Section 8A said, "Or private land, building, structure, or place without the consent of the owner or person in control thereof." The very last clause in Section 8A is what the chief would like to remove. And then, in B, Section 8B, this bylaw, Section 1B, that needs to be deleted. Section 1B. So at this point, your discussion is outside the scope of the amendment? And perhaps, once the amendment is approved or declined, we can go back to talking about the main motion?
Okay, I'm sorry to impay attention.
That's okay. Are there any questions on the amendment over here up front?
Joe Ferny, 154 Taylor Street. So what we're basically saying is, starting with the third line with the word "or any place to which members of the public have access" as invitees. So what, so basically, what we're saying is, on private property, it's permitted, but on public property, it's prohibited. Is that what we're saying?
That is basically correct. The wording in the original, like you said, from the wording that says "or private land" to the end of Section 1, it needs to be deleted. That's not going to be approved by the Attorney General's Office. We know that because they've already made a decision for another municipality on basically the same bylaw, and they disapproved that last clause. So we're looking to pull that out, and also to change in B, Section 1B, to Section 8.
Any further questions before we vote on the amendment? All right, in order for the amendment to pass, we need a majority. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The amendment passes unanimously. Is there an oppose? No, there's no oppose. So the amendment passes unanimously. So now, we will go back to discussing the main motion as amended. So, does anybody have any questions or comments on the main motion as amended? All right. In order for the motion under Article 1 as amended to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The moderator will now call, actually, the motions under Article 2 and the motion under Article 3 are not being presented tonight by the Select Board, and the reason is because of the vote last week, on August 20th, the townwide election, that rejected the ban on commercial retail marijuana. As such, the motions under Article 2 and Article 3 are now moot. So we'll be moving on to the motion under Article 4. The moderator calls Mr. Sexton to present that motion.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the Granby zoning bylaws by revising Section 3, Use Regulations, Table 1, Schedule of Use Regulations, by inserting a new land use classification for retail commercial cannabis with a definition of cannabis retail commercial operation to include marijuana retailer as defined in Mass General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 1, and a definition of commercial growth operation to include all other marijuana establishment, not as a marijuana retailer, as defined in Mass General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 1.
Can I have a second? Is there any discussion or questions under this motion? Over here, please.
Joe Ferny, 154 Taylor Street. So if I understand, the vote made Articles 2 and 3 moot, but we're still, basically, I'm confused about why we're voting on zoning bylaws right now, if we have to go back and rethink on Article 2 and 3, that were created under the assumption that the town would vote down the ability to do commercial and retail. So what am I, am I voting on Article 4? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
And so, basically then, on Article 4, the most important condition is no establishment can be within 500 feet of a property line for a public or private school. Is that basically what we're voting on?
Well, actually, what we're voting on is where we're allowing retail establishments within the town.
Okay. But, my question is, the only condition that we're voting on is any establishment, after we go back and rethink the bylaws because of the vote, it's just that any establishment cannot be within 500 feet of a school. Is that the essence of this change in zoning bylaws?
No, that is actually one of the conditions that is part of it. It's not, this is more geared towards where we'll allow to have retail establishments within the town by zoning. Where we're going to allow retail establishments in the town by zoning. Certain areas of the town will allow it, certain parts of the town will not allow it by zoning.
Okay, but whether it's commercial growth operation or a cannabis retail operation, the essence is it can't be within 500 feet of a school?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
We're going to actually read the chart, go through the chart that you have in front of you. We're going to read it for legal reasons.
So on the chart, under land use classification, so for retail services, for cannabis, retail and commercial operation, distance shall be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of property line in the question of the nearest point of the property line where the cannabis establishment is or will be located. No closer than 500 feet, property line to property line, straight line to public or private school to include any licensed daycare. In any case, where the measurement is determined to be in question, the planning board may require verification of distances by a registered land surveyor at the expense of the applicant. As you go across, you'll see where it says zoning districts. So you have RS is in, RM is in.
What are those?
Residential, we have our general business, allowed in general business is based on special permit by the planning board. Industrial, it's not allowed. Industrial 2 zone, not allowed, and the, I'm drawing a blank now.
V.C. Chris?
I'm drawing a blank.
Village Center.
The Village Center, yes. The Village Center is not allowed. So, those are the areas where, as far as zoning district, and where we're going to allow certain retail establishments to be. As far as the wholesale, industrial, transportation, under commercial growth and operation, the distance shall be measured in a straight line from nearest point of the property line in question to nearest point of property line where the cannabis establishment is or will be located. No closer than 500 feet, property line to property line, straight line to public or private school to include any licensed daycare. In any case, where the measurement is determined to be in question, the planning board may require verification of distance by a registered land surveyor at the expense of the applicant. So if you follow the same suit going across, it's the same exact thing as far as residential, general business, the village common. So you notice, if you notice in the general business, it's not allowed in general business. It's allowed in industrial 1, or industrial 1 and industrial 2 by special permit by the planning board. And obviously, the village common, it's not allowed to be in the village common as well.
All right, thank you. So we have a question over here. The mic's coming to you.
Robert Carr, Forge Pond Road. My question is, what is the ideology behind the 500 feet? Like, how was that come to, and what does that really mean?
So the state law has actually set a limit, so they cannot be any closer than 500 feet. So that's what we, that's what we went by, is what the state had, and we took that and adopted that law. So that's actually by, that's by the state, not by us.
Just a second, please, I have a question over here, and I'll get back to you. Can you stand up so he can see you?
Rich Dumiraki, Bachelor Street. Okay, I'm a little bit confused. I want to know, for retail operations, you say they can be located in general business zoning district. Could you tell me exactly what areas in town are general business, in any streets, if you could?
Rich, at this time, I can't. I don't have a map that actually, that shows it.
Was it down 202? I mean, where is it?
Parts of 202 are part of it. It's part of New Lethal Road as well. But there's separate parts down by five corners.
And, on commercial growth operations, you say they can be located in industrial in 1 and 2, whatever 1 and 2 is. Now what areas does that cover in town?
Morgan Street and part of New Lethal Road as well.
Morgan Street and what?
Morgan Street and part of New Lethal Road.
Okay, thank you. I mean, that's, I think people want to know that.
We have a comment over here. Actually, we'll go in the back first, and then come around.
Thank you, George Randall, Taylor Street. The VC stands for Village Common? That's the common in the center of town?
Yes.
I was just wondering what the rationale was for that to be on this, where that's private property. The town doesn't own that.
Not, not all of that. It's actually a certain part of 202 that's considered the village, village common. Not the part just where the church is, but part of the zoning piece is the village common.
Noted, and thank you.
Comment over here in front.
Joe Ferny, 154 Taylor Street. So am I correct in reading this, that any commercial growth opportunity for farmers or any agricultural land in this town is banned?
By the bylaws, yes.
Unless it's here?
Unless it's...
Which is not.
Well, unless it's general business areas. So in other words, doesn't, as far as like a residential area, it wouldn't be allowed. If it's considered general business, that's where it's allowed to be placed, for zoning.
I'm Brian O'Toole, Kellogg Street, also acting town council. Article 4 here essentially is putting marijuana establishments, basically putting them places so that they can be regulated, okay, in certain areas. As of right now, since there is no zoning bylaw dealing with marijuana establishments, technically, they could go anywhere they wanted to. As it stands right now, with what we have in front of us, cannabis retail operations, basically what I would consider the storefronts, those would be allowed to operate in the general business district if they meet all the requirements of the state and local authorities. All other types of marijuana operations would fall under this commercial growth operation. And marijuana establishments are defined in Mass General Laws as a marijuana cultivator, independent testing laboratories, marijuana product manufacturers, and other, any other type of licensed marijuana-related business, okay? All that the zoning bylaw does is tell you where those places can go. Who can do it, in terms of getting a license, that will be a completely separate process than what the zoning bylaw deals with. The zoning bylaw just tells you where that can happen.
So we have a question way in the back.
Sophie Mashak, Burnett Street. I'm wondering why the bylaws don't include the library and things like the churches, because we have a lot of activities that include very young children and teenagers at the library, and the churches do have Sunday school classes and other kinds of family activities, and I'm wondering if those establishments can also be included within these bylaws.
When the planning board looked at what we were doing, we had open meetings to the public, for public input, and obviously, we wanted to do the best we could as far as where they could be in town, but we also wanted to make sure that we give it the opportunity to be in town as well, depending on how the vote went. And at that time, the vote had said to allow it in town. So we wanted to do our part as far as too, as there should be places that it could be. And we didn't want it to be, as a planning board, presenting a new zoning bylaw that wouldn't allow it, you know, pretty much anywhere in town. So that's how we came across that, is, you know, looking at what the state allowed and some of the other towns were allowing as well, and what they're putting into their zoning bylaws, that's how we came up with some of the thoughts and the ideas that we had in regards to, not just schools, but something like a daycare as well, licensed daycare, something we looked at as well, where some other towns had it and some didn't. But we thought it'd be appropriate to include it within our bylaw.
We have two questions over here, the woman in the purple shirt, and then Seamus.
Becky Alexander, 197 West State Street. So if the town website is up to date, there's a zoning map under the planning board website, and it looks like it is all along 202 for general business.
Can you put the mic up to you?
It looks like it is all along 202 for general business, and most of the churches would be in the historical district, which is Village Center, I'm guessing. So it's basically 202, and then the no man's lamb, where the dump used to be, or industrial.
It's not, it was updated. It's been updated, so I don't know exactly what's on the town website, I don't actually work there. But the zoning was...
I can't speak right now what is actually on the town website, but a few years ago, the zoning areas were updated to reflect some changes, so.
So Seamus first, and then we'll get to you.
Question. Seamus Connolly, 21 Ferry Hill Road, Granby, Mass. Are we permitted on, are we permitted to, to add the stuff in, to add the stuff in our own residence? On, are we permitted to do that in our own residence?
It's outside the scope, but yes.
Seamus, that's actually a question for another article, but the answer is yes to that.
Okay, thank you, spoiler.
Yes, to a certain extent. In the back, Pam?
If I could just, Pam DeJardine, Burnett Street. If I could just clarify this business district thing for people. The general business district runs from the South Hadley Line up Route 202 to just beyond the, there's a little manufacturing plant, I can never remember, it's called M&amp;B, or, but it's on the right-hand side, as you get just about a half a mile maybe before the library, or before the old state building there. And then the village common continues from that point, goes to the other side of the, actually, it was adjusted, it goes to just beyond the church, there's one building there. And what happens is, beyond that, every business that exists, there was an overlay put on that identified those properties as general business. So it kind of hopscotches down the rest of 202. It's not the entire 202 from one end to the other. The industrial area is out in the areas that they specified. There's also an industrial overlay on the properties that are on New Lethal Road. So that light manufacturing across from where Dickinson's farm is, those properties could be used for light industrial, if in fact it made sense here in the town. But that's how the business district runs right now, under the current bylaw.
Thank you. Any further questions in the back here?
Good evening.
Name, please?
I have a question about, my name's Nicholas Robinson, Pleasant Street, Granby. I have, my only question is on the daycare, should that only be the established daycare? Because I know people can run a business out of their residence, so say they apply for a business license, then what would happen there? That's my only question.
That's why we label it as a licensed daycare. So if you are a proper business, doing business in town, as a licensed daycare, that's how we identify it. Obviously, some people watch children and things like that at their house. If they're not a licensed daycare, you know, we can't pick and choose who does it, but that's why we went, we're licensed daycare.
In the red, over here, please stand up so he can see you.
Steve Sapowski, State Street, Granby. I'm just wondering, under general business and also industrial 1 and 2, you have the SPA PB, special permit by the planning board, is that correct? And underneath that SPA, can you clarify what that stands for?
Yes, I know. It's based on site plan approval. So when you come into the planning board, we'll obviously look at what your plans are to do and how it sets up.
Do you have another question?
For those who are concerned about daycare, the only daycare that would be affected is the one that's in the district, which is the one that's on the old post office. At least, I think that was a post office when I was young enough, I'm too old to remember. But that's the only daycare on that entire strip that would be affected by that. The school is too far from the district. The only property that might affect the school is the package store, if that was to change, that would fall within that 500-foot property line distinction. Other than that, there's no other daycare in the town that would be affected by that.
Do you still have a question? Can you stand up, please? Can you stand up, please?
Rich Dumiraki, Bachelor Street. I think the planning board did a poor job of explaining where the general business and industrial zones are. It would have been nice to have a colored chart or an overview projector where everybody here could see exactly where those zones are. Now, I assume the old lumber company on 202, is that considered industrial? That's not?
It's a business zone.
So where can you have a grow facility? What areas? Only New Ludlow Road? So those...
Well, hold on, let Glenn answer.
Rich, that's something answered a little while ago. It's part of Morgan Street and New Ludlow Road.
Okay.
And going back to your comment, you know, we did our best as far as the planning board to put something together for the town people. And you're probably right, it would have been helpful to have a map of the different zoning areas.
Yeah, you did a good, very good job. I'm just saying it would be helpful if visually we could have had a graph of it.
So if anyone has a question that we haven't touched on, I will entertain it. Otherwise, I'm going to move the question. All right, in order for the motion under Article four to pass, it has to pass by a two-thirds majority. So all those in favor, please raise your cards. It's down here. Oh, maybe this is my card, I don't know if you can have it. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a two-thirds majority. The moderator will now ask Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article five.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the Granby zoning bylaws by reviving Section 5, Special Use Regulations and Performance Standards by inserting Section 5.12, Cannabis, Retail, Growing, and Distribution.
And you have to read this? The whole thing? Yep, that's all part of it.
I think yours is different than mine. You just want to read the 5.2?
Yes, read mine.
Okay.
Under the 5.12, Cannabis Retail, Growing, and Distribution, is 5.12.1, Cannabis Retail, Retail, Commercial will only be allowed in General Business, GB. 5.12.2, Distance shall be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of property line in question to the nearest point of property line where the cannabis establishment is or will be located. No closer than 500 feet, property line to property line, straight line to public or private school to include any licensed daycare. In any case, where the measurement is determined to be in a question, the planning board may require verification of distance by a registered land surveyor at the expense of the applicant. 5.12.3, All cannabis retail, commercial operations are subject to special permit and site plan approval by the planning board. 5.12.4, Commercial growth operations shall be the indoor facilities only and allowed only in the industrial and business park overlay district with special permit and site plan approval by the planning board.
Can I have a second? Any questions or discussion on the motion under Article five? Rich first and then Sophie.
Rich Dumiraki, Bachelor Street. I just had a question. Is where the old Granby Cafe used to be, is that part of the retail special exemption? I believe Partika kept that property, unless I'm mistaken, that because it's zoned retail, and could a retail facility be put there?
Rich, I can't speak at this time, but I will ask if Pam, I know she had spoken to the map, with some areas that kind of jumped over certain areas. And I know the Granby Cafe has been gone for some time now, but I don't know if that fell into one of the categories she was talking about. I can't speak to it definitely because I don't have it in front of me to say.
Pam, do you know the answer to that? Wait, wait for the mic.
What was the question again? Could you repeat the question?
Rich, can you ask the question again? It was basically...
Well, I know McDuffie bought more property there, but I don't know how far back Partika's property goes. I thought he kept the land where Granby Cafe was because it was zoned retail.
Where the cafe used to be?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not going to be business property anymore.
Well, you sure?
Well, the property's been torn down, you got a use issue. So if it's abandoned for a couple of years, you're not going to be able to put things there.
Okay, so you're telling me, well, I guess I should be talking to Glenn.
That's okay.
I mean, technically, that lot is carved out as business, but the school has it.
But the question is, is it, does Partika own 500 feet back? There's a lot of land there.
No, that's all owned by the school, I believe, now.
I don't believe the frontage is.
Rich, in all fairness, I don't know if that is part of Partika's property or McDuffie, that's part of McDuffie's school and their property. This time, I don't know. But it was, as you said, one time, it was the Granby Cafe. But over the years, I don't know who actually owns it at this point.
Sophie, do you have a question?
Sophie Myshak Burnett Street. I was just wondering, this puts a lot of power into the hands of the planning board to approve these permits and site plans. Do these individuals or commercial retailers that come to, do they have to, first of all, do they have to appear before the planning board, before a public forum, so nothing is done? There's transparency in what's going on in issuing these permits? What are the guidelines to get these permits? Are they published somewhere? And is there going to be an oversight committee to check on the planning board and see who's, like, will the select board have anything to say as well? If there's a question on, you know, who's getting what, and somebody may say, well, my cousin got this, and how come my brother didn't get this? Is there any way, a system of checks and balances on how the planning board will be issuing these permits?
Okay, so Sophie, starting off with your first question, the planning board does have open meetings to the public. So if something like that is coming up, it would be on the agenda for a special permit. So if someone's looking to do something as far as a special permit, that would be on the agenda for the planning board. So people could show up at that time, and if they is concerned or anything like that, they could voice their opinion as well. As far as an oversight, the planning board does not have an oversight. We are elected board through the town, so there's no oversight, and there's no oversight by the select board.
So can the public come to the planning board meetings where these retailers and growth operators are requesting plans, site plans, and special permits? And will we be able to participate in that procedure?
Yes, and yes. And just so everybody actually knows too, based on the law, the town of Granby can have one facility within the town. I don't know if people realize that, but there's a formula that's actually set up. And throughout the summer, there were several public meetings put on by the marijuana ad hoc committee. And a lot of this stuff was being gone over. And one thing that was there is that there's actually, as a formula is set up through the state, Granby actually qualifies to have one establishment in their town.
I just get so concerned. I always associate drugs with bad things and people being arrested and jail sentences. And I was just, I just hope that if it brings prosperity to this community, that there's also an element of control and safety for the people living here as well, that have to travel the highways and the grocery stores while people might be hot, I mean, high on marijuana. I was just wondering if there's going to be some sort of, will people be stopped, just like they might be if there's an issue about drunk driving? Is there going to be control mechanisms put into place so that crime will not be on the rise or abuses?
Are there any further questions? Go ahead.
Joe Ferny on 154 Taylor Street. So based on the state formula, we're only going to be allowed to have one retail establishment. What about growing establishments? Are we allowed only one also?
It's one.
A growing establishment is not, it may be commercial, but it's not retail.
I'm going to ask the chief to come up. He was our chair for the ad hoc marijuana committee, so.
Because while he comes up, you know, towns that are coming in early, there are some serious tax dollars to be generated on the growing side. The former governor of Massachusetts, William Weld, is on the board of directors of one of the biggest multi-state growing companies in the entire U.S. So any of you that voted for William Weld know that he's cashing in big time.
Joe, keep it to the scope, please, of the article. We're just checking.
Okay, I'm going to try to clarify something that there was a little bit of confusion on. First of all, the town of Granby can have more than one retail establishment. Where some of the confusion came in with the law is that if we wanted to restrict retail to less than 20% of what our open alcohol licenses are, that would require a vote here to do that, and then a second vote at the ballot to do it. But that's not what we're trying to do. So to answer your question, there could be more than one retail place or more than one grow in the town of Granby. So I hope that A, answers your question, and B, kind of clarifies the confusion. So there can be more than one unless the town were to try to restrict it that way. Meaning, when I say town, I mean town meeting. And if we were to do that, not only would we have to do it here, but we would have to do it at the ballot at a special election as well.
Thank you. We have a question over here, in the red shirt, and then I'll get to you.
Anthony Serini, Cedar Drive. Just a question on citing the location. I know we have limited places we can cite these businesses. Is there a contingency for somebody who wants to open up a daycare after the fact? What the procedure would be? Is the new business going to get booted?
No, I, from my point of view, if the business is open and they're there and they're established business, I wouldn't say that daycare can come in and say, well, I'm going to have a daycare next door to you, you have to leave. And that's not the business that's there already. They're a said business, so.
Do you have a question still over here?
I think in some ways my...
Can I have your name, please?
Oh, my name is Robert Carr, Forge Pond Road. I think my question was just answered. That was a concern of mine, if someone wanted to open up a daycare. But still, with that question in mind, how does the planning board assess whether there is a licensed private daycare when giving a permit for a building to, or a business to be put up? You know, because as far as I understand, the daycare is estate licensing. So I just was wondering, to avoid any suits or anything, you know, how, what mechanism do they have in place to figure that out? Or maybe not yet.
Is there a business in town that has to file? Within the town, if they're operating as a business, as a licensed daycare in a business, they have to have a certificate from town that they're operating in town as a business.
So we have one more question, and then we will vote on, oh, we have two more?
Pam DeJardine's on Burnett Street. The way I read this, though, and just for clarification's sake, this requires, if we had a retail facility come in, we'd have to have a 500-foot property line issue. If a daycare came in after the fact and wanted to go next door, wouldn't we still have that? Wouldn't we prohibit the daycare from going in? The ordinance would still apply.
Pam, at this time, it's just more of a what-if, and it's more of a legal issue. So if that does happen, that's something we'd have to look at as far as a legal issue, as far as the established business being there.
Well, it's not a what-if, it's an ordinance.
The what-if is that if the daycare, licensed daycare, came in after, tried to open up after.
But what the ordinance is going to read is no closer than 500 feet property line to property line, straight line, public, private school, or daycare. It sounds to me like the town would be restricting the daycare from going in there. I'm not opposed to that. I'm just trying to clarify because that's how the bylaw reads as it's going in.
No, and I would agree with that. It restricts the, at that time, would restrict the daycare from...
It would restrict the daycare after the fact.
But also, it could, I mean, look at variance and stuff like that. But that's something, you know, just speaking with our attorney, that's something we'd have to look at if that does happen. And again, we're just going off, and like I said, is, this is a bylaw that we're looking to put in place. It's not to say that next year, this bylaw can't be changed or not. And I hope everybody realizes that there are a lot of information came from the state in regards to what can and can't be done, which took a lot of different people in town and a lot of different boards and committees to take a look at, try to kind of make sense out of it. And just up to the past two months ago, they were still making different decisions that affected us. So, and again, it took some time to doing, and we came up with the best possible change in zoning as a bylaw at this time. change in zoning as a bylaw at this time. But not to say in the future can a bylaw be changed. Because we could look at this next year and decide, you know what? We'd like to maybe do something different. And as the town people, that's our option to do something like that.
Do you still have a question in the back?
Ann Cody, Agerbrook Drive. I think you answered my question. I wondered why this is limited to indoor facilities for growing only and not farmland. And I guess this, that could be changed in the future also.
Anything can change.
Yes, you're right. Question over here next to Annie.
I don't know, I don't know, Nick Robinson, Pleasant Street, Granby. I don't know if I'm out of place here. I know the Cannabis Control Commission considers greenhouse facilities as outdoor grows. I don't know if, I think the planning department went on board and said that it's an indoor grow. Is there going to be clarification in like, in the literature about it?
If the Massachusetts law, general law permits it and they, there's certain things that come up and reading the law, a lot of different things come up in regards to what a growing facility is, what has to happen to have a growing facility, what steps need to happen, what security measures you have to have. So obviously, we would follow the state law.
We have a question over here for a chief.
Al Wishart, Seven Trout, Lilly Lane. I think one of the things that we probably really ought to focus on is that we're just looking to lay the foundation of the zoning bylaws here. This is new across the state. There isn't anybody who's dealt with it yet. There's going to be a ton of changes like there always are in Massachusetts law. This isn't going to be written in stone, as the selectman said. We can make changes to this. This is really just a basic zoning foundation. And all the other communities in Massachusetts are doing the same thing. They're having the same questions, making similar decisions. So I think if we keep in mind that things are going to change in the future and the town of Granby and its zoning bylaws from time to time have to change. And so this won't be written in stone until, you know, forever. As things develop and change, the town will have to change and so will the zoning bylaws. They're just looking to get the basic foundation and I think we just need to stay focused on that.
So I'm now going to move the question unless there's something that you haven't gotten answered and you're dying to ask. Are you dying to ask this question?
Joe Ferny, Fernia 154 Taylor. So is commercial for recreational use being treated the same as medical marijuana growing?
No.
So that's not part of this bylaw?
No.
So how does that get treated? Where, where's the bylaw in the town regarding a growing facility for medical marijuana?
We don't have a bylaw for medical marijuana, marijuana, regards to that. And the state, the state's pretty clear as to what you can and can't do as far as medical marijuana.
So in order for the motion to pass under Article 5, it must pass by a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a two-thirds majority. What? So the motion under Article 6 is not going to be moved tonight by the select board and that's basically because we have a general bylaw committee that is currently looking at our bylaws and revamping them and we're going to allow them to work on that article when they come forth with their changes. So we will not be reading the motion under Article 6. The moderator will now call on Mr. Shonacki to present the motion under Article 7.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account 30-171-5801, Dufrane's Dam Repair, $50,000 for the purpose of funding an investigation slash evaluation of Forge Pond Dam and Dyke.
Second, are there any questions or comments? We have a comment back here.
Am I correct, George Randall, Taylor Street. Am I correct in understanding that this is the money that the town appropriated for the dam survey and repair at Dufrane's Pond years ago? That's been sitting dormant in an account?
Correct.
Holy crow.
In order for the motion to pass under Article 7, it must pass by a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator now calls on Mr. Joyce to present the motion under Article 8.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account 30-171-5801-ART, the Dufrane's Dam Repair, $20,000 for the purpose of funding a limited site investigation by a licensed site professional as required by Mass DEP.
Second, discussion? Maybe we have a few, I'll start over here.
So just to be clear, the 20,000 you're asking for is from the 50,000 we just approved?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The 20,000 in Article 8 is from the 50,000 that was just approved?
Pam, we originally put $99,000 aside for Dufrane Dam Repair.
Yep.
We took 50 out of it, leaving 49,000. Now we're taking another 20,000 out to fund this, leaving 29,000 in that account.
So is the 20,000-
Is in addition to the 50,000.
And is it for a site evaluation?
Do you want to answer, you want me to answer?
All right, let me, let me explain the whole process on this one. When we did the addition to the East Metal School, we drilled another well in the back of the property. As part of the DEP process, we have to get the water tested. They discovered these PFAs in the water. As we continued doing more and more testing and ran it faster, we discovered that the PFAs disappeared when you ran the wells for a long period of time. However, as part of the process, DEP required the fire department to fill out a survey because their training area is near where the new well is, in the back of the property. What happened is, is the fire department identified that they used to train with Class B foam to fight airplane fires because of Westover. Class B foam is a known-
Carcinogen.
Carcinogen that carries these PFAs. So what DEP is requiring us to do is instead of doing a deep well test, which the current well is, they're making us do shallow well testing to see if the PFAs are present in shallow groundwater versus the deep water well. Does that answer your question?
That answers my question. It also builds support for getting water out there.
A question, Sophie.
How much money is left in the stabilization fund?
This isn't, this isn't coming out of stabilization.
It says transfer from the stabilization fund.
No, that's the article. The motion is moving it from account 30-171-5801-ART.
What does that mean in layman's terms?
So the article, the warrant is a warning to the public of what we may discuss. The motion is actually what we are discussing tonight. So at the time they drafted the warrant, they weren't sure where the money was going to come out of. Now we know the money is going to come out of this account for Dufrane's Dam Repair. So it's not a stabilization question.
Okay, but, you know, I see Article 7, then 8. We keep funding investigations, evaluations, whether it's for the school, whether it's for the dam, whether, we, I don't get it. Why don't you just fix the dam instead of keep getting investigations? And, and this is like money down the drain. I mean, we don't have that much money to waste around here and I just don't get it. It's, to me, this is foolish, the way this is written and the way it's going to be applied.
Okay, under Article 7, we are required to do this as part of a non-compliance report issued by DCR back in 2017. State agencies requiring us to do it. Under Article 8, it's Mass DEP, another state agency that's requiring us to do this. It's not that we are doing this on our own. We're being required to do it by state agencies. We have no choice in the matter. And I agree with you, yes, study after study after study. However, when the state says we have to do it, we have to do it. Otherwise, we can be subject to fines.
Joe, do you still have a question? You do? Yeah. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Rich.
Rich Dumiraki, Bachelor Street. You know, I'm a little disappointed, this is the first time, Article 7 and Article 8, you gave us absolutely no explanation before you were ready to ask for a vote. Steve did not say one word about Article 7. We have always gotten a description of what the article is about. Now, if, if, it would have helped if Chris got up there and told us before you asked for a vote or before someone in the audience has to ask, what is it all about? Now, you've, you've given us descriptions, you know, right along and you just stopped doing it, the last two articles. So I'd appreciate it if you could continue to do it the way you have been doing it.
All right, we'll start right now with Article 8.
Okay, everybody. What I have in my hand is I have an engineering document from Tide and Bond. They are the people that the town is proposing to give this $20,000 to do the testing. As Mr. Martin has says, in a past training area behind the East Metal School, which the fire department used to use, but they have not used it in 11 years. Some of their initial testing on the deep wells had pre or poly PFAs, which is per and polyfluoroacetylenesupstance for PFA, that's what it stands for. The, there was no requirement on the initial school to do shallow wells. But when DEP found out there was some PFAs in the deep wells, they have told the town, you have to do six shallow wells. So the town is required to do six shallow wells. We're using the money from the account for Dufrane's Park because these mandatory requirements are a more priority than the repair at the dam of Dufrane's Park. An example, when Mr. Shonacki was up here, the state has rated Forge Pond's dam in worse shape than Dufrane's. So that's why they took the money out of Dufrane's for, took the money out of Dufrane's for Forge Pond. And we're doing the same thing here. We're taking some money out of money that was put aside to repair the Dufrane's dams and we're using it for a state mandate. Does that help everybody?
We have a question over here. Oliver, over here. Can you stand up?
James Graham, West Street. Just to kind of reiterate what Rich said and more of an explanation, I can understand if a dam falls down and, you know, that kind of thing. But what's the downside, you know, a little better explanation, what's the downside? If you put in these test, test wells and it's found to be bad, what happens?
Okay, when you get into that, you're getting into a what-if situation. And as far as DEP will tell the town based upon the results, what the town has to do. But right now, the town is under a mandate from DEP to do the six shallow wells to collect the data so they can determine if there's an issue or not. So I can't tell you if they're found, how much is there, whatever, until the study is performed.
Um, Joe.
Joe Ferny, 154 Taylor Street. So based on the shallow well project, are our children at risk for drinking water at the schools as a result of this?
The answer to that is no, Joe. Because the water feeding the elementary school is from the deep well, which passed, okay? That there were no PFAs present in the last set of testing we did on that well. That's the well that feeds the high school and the elementary school. So we have no issue there, okay?
Joe Rakowski.
Joe Rakowski, 124 Maximilian Drive. I just want to support Rich's comment. I've made this comment a dozen times. The person reading the warrant should take a moment to sort of explain and give a story about what's going on instead of forcing us to ask questions and then it takes, you know, the, the meeting goes sideways. So if you can just, if you're responsible for talking about the warrant, take a minute and give an overview and tell a story about what's going on. It'll save a lot of time, it'll save a lot of aggravation. I've said this a dozen times over 25 years. I wish we could just get that straight. It would make, it would just make things go much smoother and we don't turn sideways for 15 minutes.
Point taken.
Thank you.
Pam.
Chris, this is directed to you. If we run into an issue, if it's not a deep well issue, it's possibly a shallow well issue, and isn't there an aquifer that goes through there?
I believe there, I believe there may be one. I don't know the exact, where the exact aquifer is, Pam, okay? What would happen is if, depending upon the level of PFAs detected, they go based upon a scale by the EPA, which would determine what we would have to do there. Worst-case scenario, you have to dig all the dirt out and replace it.
And remediate, yeah, so it's a remediate, it could be a remediation problem?
Could be a remediation. It could be, we may just have to treat the ground with something. I don't know. It would be dependent upon the level and what DEP dictates to us that we would have to do.
So they've asked us to test the shallow wells. In the, in the course of their scale, where is, where are the levels that are showing up?
We haven't tested the shallow well yet. When we test, when we tested the deep well, it was way below the minimum required requirement by EPA for remediation or, or treatment.
So, so they've just, they've done this because they realized that the fire department was training out there? And they know what went into the ground?
From a survey that the fire department had to fill out regarding the operation of the training area since day one.
So now they just want to test and see how much, if any, remediation needs to be done?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The woman in the black shirt, please stand up.
Hi, Faith Rakowski, Maximilian Drive. I was just wondering what the timeline was when this money was going to be spent?
Ask the question again, couldn't hear you.
What was the, what is the timeline? Like, when is this money going to be spent? Like, when is this money going to be spent?
All right. Under the DEP directive, we have 90 days to drill the test wells, find out what the levels are, and give a report back to DEP for them to then tell us how we have to proceed based upon the results of the testing.
Thank you.
One last question, Seamus.
Seamus Connolly, 21 Fairhill Road. I have lived in this town for, this is a comment, by the way, I've lived in this town for 28 years. I mean, not 28, I meant 26, because I moved here in 1992 when I was two years old.
Seamus, put the mic up to your mouth.
Oh, sorry. I've been living in this town since I was two years old. I just want to say, we live in a very good town. If there's, if there is money to spend that the state or the state is mandating us to spend, you guys got to spend it, whether you like it or not. I don't like it, none of you like it. But if you, but if you are required, if the town is being forced to spend money out of funds, you might as well vote for it, or you don't want your taxes to be going up to state or, say, federal fines. You really should, you really should be more investive of not yourselves, but your children, your grandchildren, and like, caring about other people than yourselves. And to other people who said, you know, drugs cause crime, they do, in the inner cities, not in Granby.
Seamus, make sure you're talking about the motion under Article 8.
Okay. If there's an issue with Forge Pond Dam, you know, you know what I mean, you know, put research into it. If there's an issue at the Dufrane's Park Dam, put money into Forge Pond Dam. It is not, you know what I mean, it is not something, you know, any other issue, I agree with him, we should, we should put out a slideshow, you know, showing what is going on in the town so people have more of a, have more of an idea.
All right, thank you, Seamus.
You're welcome. God bless Granby and God bless America.
So in order to vote this question, do you have a question, or do you want to move the question? Okay, so I'm being asked to move the question. I think we've had enough discussion on this motion. In order for this motion to pass, we need a majority. So all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator now calls for a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Second? All in favor? Thank you.